Enough said.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of February 6th. These meetings are recorded. I'll take a motion from John, seconded by Joe for the minutes. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, opposed, four in favor, one abstention. We have an 81P for 28 Ravenna Street.
I mean, it's not here yet. We'll see.
Okay.
Hold off until later.
So, we'll go right into the continued public hearing for the application of FND Central Realty Corp. for special permit to construct Bear Hill Village planned residential development, as well as the continued public hearing for the application of FND Central Realty Corp. for approval of Bear Hill Village definitive plan. All yours.
Well, I think the last meeting, we had gone through everything that were outstanding issues. I addressed a few additional ones with Mike last week, just to clean up some paperwork.
Are you referring to, because I have a memo from Mike.
Soil test pits?
That's the location of the soil test pits. Test pits should be added to the plan, and the detail of the open box, box cover should be added to the detail sheet.
Yeah, I got that this afternoon, too, as I was out of the office, but those will be added.
Added, okay.
Be added prior to endorsement of any plans.
Ah, that's from the town engineer, I'm sorry.
Yes. So, I think at the last meeting, we would just finalize the decision. I believe Larry has done that. We've looked at it a couple of times. We've made some changes and corrections, and I don't really have any more to say, really, on either of these. If anybody else has any questions.
So, there's no other issues, outstanding issues? Mike, you're content?
Yep.
Larry, you're good. The decision, I know there's been a draft, it's been sent. I'm assuming that you've had an opportunity to review the draft. With that, what's the pleasure of the board, noting that this is a public hearing, so that the first course of action would be to close the public hearing?
Is anybody in that time?
Any questions from the board?
No.
The pleasure of the board?
Take a motion to close the public hearing and approve the plan.
Motion by Joe to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Motion for, from Joe, excuse me, to approve the application for special permit, as well as the application for the approval of Bear Hill Village definitive plan?
Yeah. With these changes added to it, when we endorse it.
With the notes to be added to the plan, which the engineer had conceded that he would do. Seconded by, by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Four in favor?
One abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just the way I hoped it would.
Did we both, did you bunch them together?
I did.
Okay.
I did.
Oh, you did.
Well, again, I called them, you know, I called them together. I closed it with your second, and then I asked Joe, and he approved both, and then your second and both, so yes. Is the 81P in the room? Larry? Okay. We're gonna go to the amended site plan for 2 and 4 Beach Street.
I'm Dale McKinnon from Gary &amp; Holland. So, you haven't seen me before. If I do anything wrong, it's my fault, because he did, he told me what to say.
Yeah, he's sneaking out, so.
You wanna do this one? Note my abstention on this one, Karen, I'm sorry. I didn't realize.
Welcome.
Thank you.
That's why I always go back and look to see who it is.
Who's on first?
That's my brother-in-law.
We have a proposed change in use of 2 to 4 Beach Street. The person that wants, okay, sorry. The, Luke, would you, would you come up? This is Luke Souza, and he'd like to talk about figure of this. If you have any questions on the uses, Luke can answer those. He would be going into where the pizza parlor used to be at this location. The owner of this property is.
Yeah, Jimmy Fitch's.
Yeah, Jimmy Fitch's. The owner of this property is David Pine. So, what we've been asked to do, Lou's had a meeting with Larry, and basically what we've put on here in red is the proposed work that we would put, do on the site for, to allow them to come in. Now, currently, there's three spaces in the front of the location, the opening for the pizza parlor, but to get the appropriate spacing, we've shown on here in red where the owner of the property will restripe the site. What we have is a handicap and then 11 other parking spaces. Basically, they're eight feet. Most of them are 22-foot long in locations where they're in line with each other. Otherwise, they're 18 where there are a single space. We're proposing to put in five painted arrows on the ground to create a counterclockwise rotation to the site, and we have proposed a do-not-enter sign on, in the front access, and then for anyone that might access from the Mount Pleasant Street side, so that they would know that they wouldn't go against the rotation. And then we have some proposed signage for the handicap space, and also, we're gonna remove one of the existing no-parking signs that's on this fence along this side. So, that's what we're proposing to do to make the use appropriate for the site.
Any questions from the board? I'll read Larry's letter into the records. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to allow for the change of use in portion of the existing building on the subject property. For those that aren't familiar, it's the, I believe, it's the old Napoleon's Pizza. Used to be, well, Glassworld was at the other end, or Glassworks, I forget what world, Glassworld, at the far end of the site, corner of Beach Street and Mount Pleasant. Specifically, the proposal is to replace the former restaurant, retail food store, meat market. There are no additions being proposed to the building, and the parking lot striping is to be refreshed and realigned. Some of the proposed parking spaces are poorly positioned, and no provision has been made for a dumpster for the new market. In particular, particularly, parking spaces number 11 is located in the likely dumpster site. No new impervious areas are being created. The off-street parking requirements are not affected. Generally, all other applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend the site plan be approved, subject to the above comments. That was from the town planner, town engineer's letter. Submitter's waiver of site plan, site is .33 acres, zone central industrial. Following review of the subject documents, Mike's comments are there is no dumpster shown on the plan. Proposed parking shown on the plan does not reflect the original parking layout from the original approval, nor does it mimic what is actually taking place at the site. In my opinion, the parking should be reevaluated. It is understood that typical clearance widths dimensions will never be able to be met on this site. Milford Water Company has no changes requested. Milford Water Company sees no conflicts or issues. And those are the only letters that we have. Based on those, were there any other comments from the board? I was looking at Mike's comments, and I sort of have the same, I'm not sure that the parking really works too well, looking at this real quick. Nor does it reflect anything that I think people would actually do when they're there, which is probably more of a concern. You can mark as many spaces as you want, but I get the feeling people, especially if they're gonna be going to the building on the far right, putting 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7 of the parking spaces all on the other side, I have questions as to whether they'd actually get used or not, as opposed to parking and minimizing the lane widths that are shown out there. I don't know if you had had a chance to look at it at all, in terms of what might, what they might be able to do, Mike, in deference to what's shown on this plan, but I do have some worries that, you know, this is more shown on a plan than actually will work.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I studied it a little bit, but I would prefer to sit down with the proponent and go over it. But what my thoughts were, was obviously the dumpster, you can see in some old aerial photography and even street views, as Larry mentioned, the dumpster, the previous dumpster, which was, you know, the restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Dealing with food, which I would assume a meat market is going to be dealing with food and waste. The dumpster was located right in the area of where the parking, number 11 is.
Mm-hmm.
On the ground, there are a couple angled parking lot, parking spaces where number 1 is shown. So, I looked at it in terms of placing a couple there, which is actually taking place on the ground currently. And then up in the northern portion of the site, which I know it kicks some of the parking spaces, as you just mentioned, to the far side, but with this site, you know, I'm hoping that the insurance company and the market, hopefully, they offset, and if you pull in here, if you can get to a parking spot on this type of site, I think you're lucky. So, they're really using, on the ground, you know, where the most spaces, that's what basically happens. In a tight site, people start parking where they can.
Mm-hmm.
So, they were actually pulling in and parking parallel with Beach Street, up in the areas of 5, 6, and 7, knowing that takes some of that circulation away, but that's why I referenced in my, in my letter that, you know, this is never gonna be perfect, this site, so.
Yeah.
I just think if it's reevaluated, I mean, there's, you know, there's another parking spot, number 10, that's just stuffed in front of a garage door.
Right.
I know the garage door, you know, if you look in the windows, it's framed in, so they're not using that one garage door. I got that, and I understand that, but it's just, I think it could be a little bit better.
Yeah, I don't.
It's not gonna be perfect.
Yeah, I don't know that, again, if 11 gets taken, I think you certainly have to evaluate this with the dumpster. I mean, I think the ability to park in 10 is questionable, and especially if there's a car in 11, if that were actually a parking spot, I don't think it's gonna be accessible.
And then, and then, excuse me, and then referencing the original plan, or the plan that was originally approved, or the older plan that was approved that I saw, basically, they lined parallel parking, all on the southern, southern property line.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and then, you know, the drive widths were narrow to begin with, so they were lined all along there, you know, and here, again, I don't think they're doing that on the ground, so maybe in between the two. Larry may think, you know, his opinion might, might be that, you know, just go back to the original, which I still think is better than what's shown there now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if nothing else, parking spaces number 8, 10, and 11 could be along the southern property line as parallel spaces with the proper dimensions, 22 feet long. And then, they'd have space for their dumpster, and their circulation would still work. The alternative would be, as Mike said, go back to some kind of an angle parking, but either way, what's, what's on the plan now, I wouldn't recommend.
Yeah, I mean, based on, I mean, just looking at this real quick, and again, you know, the handicap space, I think would be, would be awful difficult to get in, based on, based on what I see for the curb here.
Yep.
And trying to back into that space, and then people trying to get in, I think is gonna cause a problem. I mean, not that I think there's gonna be lineups here, obviously, we only have 11 spaces, and I don't think you get a lot of people, but if you have somebody in that second spot, it's, it's gonna cause a problem trying to get in. Is there, is there enough room if they, if they parallel park along the southern property line to get between the corner of the building and a travel lane there?
It's, it's narrow there, and that's the reason, what I didn't, because that would have been the preference, to lay it out along that, along that, parallel to that fence line. And I was trying to give adequate spacing, and that's why I went to this area that, in other words, there's actually cars, I've seen, and you can see them in Google Earth parked in the space aid, and I rotated one. I agree with Mike on the garage door, but I was trying to find the extra space, and it is not being used, so that's why I threw it there. So, basically, I was just trying to give adequate movement area. I certainly have no objection if you go with the narrowness, see, the first corner there is where I'm concerned, it could be less than 10 feet between the parking stall and the corner of the building, right there, so that, that was an issue.
The best place for.
I mean, I guess you gotta, you're gonna have to take a look at it.
Look at the handicap and space number 1, and look at the rest of it.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is, it looks to me like you could go angled parking on, on the parking stalls on the north end, and perhaps get more parking in there. It looks like you have enough clearance, because I'm not sure that you can get into the, the last spot's gonna be somewhat difficult to get into, trying to, trying to back into that anyway, so I, I mean, I think there might be a better way to align that.
Well, the concern, one of the concerns was the timing. It would have helped the applicant if his engineer would have communicated with us a little better. But my recommendation.
Well, I mean, I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, I mean, based on what I'm seeing, I'd like to see an improved plan with the parking and to see, and see the dumpster added to it.
My concern on the applicant's behalf is the timing, and I would suggest a waiver subject to, and then we'll get it straightened out and give you a call, and, well, we can send you a PDF, and you can come down and sign it at some point. But it's just a change of use of plan, it's just that the parking's been so screwed up there for so long that it really needs to be fixed. Part of the problem, too, is the insurance company has potentially unregistered vehicles sitting there with signs on them, so they're using vehicles as advertising devices, and that wastes at least two parking spaces right there, so if we can get the striping pattern cleaned up, which I'm sure we can, and then the applicant's, you know, amenable to that, my concern is his timing to try to put his store in there, so.
I can understand that, but I'm hearing comments from everybody on the board, I don't think it's just me that's, that would like to see this.
Right.
No, no.
Joe, I was just talking about that handicap spot, is there a better place to put the handicap?
Well, we talked about putting it in number, we talked about putting it in number 1.
Huh?
We talked about putting it at number 1, where number 1 is, I mean, I.
This is why you communicate with us first, so you don't do this now.
Okay.
I mean, I guess, you're gonna have to, I don't know whether 1 will work, though, Larry, because you're gonna have to have the correct width without.
Right.
If it's a handicap, it's gonna have to be a widened space.
Right.
So, if that fits in, but, I mean, I have no problem in general, but I think everybody's gonna need to see this, so I'm not sure that it isn't, you know, considering we have a meeting in two weeks, I'm not sure that that, that changes the applicant's.
Well, other than, other than seeing the plan again, I think that might affect his ability to make the, make the switch from a business standpoint, so, I mean, I'd still recommend approval of the change of use, subject to getting this done and coming back and getting the plan signed off on, but at least that would free up.
I don't, yeah, yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have a problem with the change of use, but we need to get the plan strained out. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Do we approve the change of use?
You could change, yeah, and have them come back with the plan.
All right, I'll make a motion that the change of use is, is okay.
Motion by John to approve the change of use, with the applicant coming back with a revised plan. I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Babe. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question. I can certainly present a new plan. Do I send it to Mike and Larry?
Yes.
You should get it into them as soon as possible, and let them review it, so that if it's on the agenda for our next meeting, they at least have a chance to go through it, and then we can, if there's any other concerns from the board after we see it, we can address it at that point.
Tomorrow, next day.
Not hearing any other questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Three in favor, one abstention.
That's for change of use only.
Oh, I'm sorry, four in favor. I just can't count.
Where does slightly go out of order? You wanna do 6? Let me get rid of my family all in one swoop. Item 6, zoning variance, 123 Congress Street. I've always asked Larry to put it at the end of the agenda, but he just chooses not to listen to me.
Well, at that point, it was.
Yours, Mr. Petnarys?
Yes, sir.
You want me to read the comments first, and then you can go through yours? Does that help you?
Sure.
Go through Larry's. The applicant requests ZBA variance to allow for the relocation of a lot line between lots 4 and 5 to existing conforming lots currently under common ownership. The variance originally granted for this request in 2016 was not exercised and has therefore lapsed. The location of the house on Lot 5, the southerly lot, does not meet the side yard setback requirements from the northerly side property line. This variance will result in two lots, the new northerly lot 4, to be 11,400 square feet in area, and having 95 feet of width. 15,000 square feet of area or 100 is required in the RB zone. I recommend a favorable to the zoning board.
I'm Ernie Petnary, no longer at Clark Main Street, but still practice in line with Donovan. I was here and then at the zoning board the year before last, and he brought Mrs. Pine of variance on this lot. One of the remarkable things that happened that evening was that not only were there Noah Butters showing up to object, but there were actually people there that supported the application. The lots in question end up being comparable to any of the lots in the Congress Street area. The creation of a conforming house with, all the setbacks conforming, except the lot size, width, et cetera, was something that the zoning board thought was a reasonable exercise of their power to grant the variance, for a lot of different reasons. Mrs. Pine simply didn't exercise the variance. And when we realized that, rather than seek a six-month extension, because their concern, my concern primarily, was about the clarity of the title issues, we thought it would be appropriate to go back in front of the zoning board and ask for another variance. That's what this is. There's nothing different tonight than was presented a year and a half ago, and as you read, Mr. Caligoni, the resultant lots are the two that are shown here. This one ends up being 11,400, this one ends up being 21,429. Again, that's the presentation. If you have specific questions about any of the qualities of the lots, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions from members of the board?
I recommend a favorable report be followed to the zoning board.
Motion by Johnson, favorable recommendation to the zoning board. Second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lena.
I guess I, I believe my vote the last time, and it'll be the same this time, is against the favorable recommendation, I just don't see the hardship. I mean, the hardship was created by the owner themselves when they added an addition onto the building, so I'm not quite sure what the hardship is, other than that, created by themselves, and I don't know that the law actually even allows them to ask for this, but that's, story for a different day.
With that, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Three in favor, one opposed, those please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We have an amended site plan for 2123 and 27 West Street. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to allow for the change from the non-conforming funeral home to residential use on the subject property. ZBA granted a special permit for the property in their 11, 9, 17 meeting. The funeral home building will be converted entirely for residential use, with two new two-bedroom units on the first floor, and a new two-bedroom unit being added to the existing unit on the second floor. A total of four units in the building. The single-family dwelling to the rear of the property will remain, and the adjacent garage with an apartment on the second floor will also remain. The existing two-family dwelling to the west of the funeral home will also remain with no modifications. There'll be a total of eight units with the proposed plan. The applicant also proposes the merger of both parcels into one large parcel for the proposed compound. The proposed residential complex will result in a development that is more in tune with the surrounding residential neighborhood. Traffic generation and parking will be dramatically improved with the proposed changes. However, the site plan does not reference the ZBA special permit or identify the number of units in the various buildings. The site plan also does not show a zoning compliance chart, and the proposed dumpster location, excuse me, is problematic, directly next to Godfrey Brook. All other applicable, excuse me, applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met. Therefore, Larry is recommending the amended site plan be approved, subject to the above noted deficiencies being addressed. Mike, it looks quickly that you had the same concern in terms of, let's see, the dumpster?
Yes, the dumpster location adjacent to Godfrey Brook, yep.
Okay. Your recommendation is possibly north of number 27 West Street. This will also free up the right circulation area around number 21 West Street. Also, you referenced the site plan does not include zoning tables, references special permit that was issued by the ZBA. This information needs to be added to the plan. We also have the plan from the ZBA. The fire chief has no concerns, excuse me, the deputy chief has no concerns. The water board, the water department, has no issues. And with that, it is all yours, Mr. Antonellis.
Good evening, thank you. For the record, Joseph Antonellis, with me tonight, I would introduce my associate, Eli Lanio, who's joined me a couple months ago, so you may be seeing him.
He's replacing you, Joe?
He may. He's fallen behind.
What's his title? He's covering up his tie, Joe. I mean, you gotta teach him better.
No comments, I've, you know.
I think he heard about that, that's why he's wearing a sweater.
At any rate, we digress, um, as I said to the zoning board when I was there that night, this is.
Here we go.
This is a unique petition in the town of Milford, because it's not very often that you have an applicant coming in seeking to put things together. It's usually, we're taking them apart, we're separating lots, making more lots than we have. This is, as stated, this is the compound that was owned by the Kellet family, and my client, Marlon Noguera, just recently purchased it from Janet Consigli Kellet, who is the widow of Jim Kellet, as you know, who ran the funeral home, his father, pride to that. The property's always consisted of the single-family house in the rear, a two-family house to the left here, which is on a separate lot, and then the funeral home. And as you've heard from the conversation, the special, the zoning board granted a special permit to allow us to merge the parcels, finish the room over the garage that had been begun, and create like an in-law apartment there, keep this as a two-family, and then make four residential units inside of the funeral home. Funeral home actually had a residence in it, it was an apartment upstairs. There's gonna be a complete reconversion of the inside into four equally-sized apartments. Again, I think that my client and his engineer did a good job in trying to address the parking. We did it without, you know, we did come in and spend some time with your staff to go over the best way to handle it. I can tell you that that site was picked for the dumpster, that while it is close to Godfrey Brook, we believed it was the most appropriate place for the dumpster, because it's as far away from surrounding residences as one can get. So, where you have more density back off of here, you have nothing there, you've got the Brook, and then a housing development on the side, so it was picked there, obviously. Also, that's, as you know, that wall has all been reinforced and reconstructed through the years by the town of Milford. Did not see any safety issues with it there. Obviously, I'll defer to the board. If the board feels strongly that the dumpster should be placed someplace else, then we'll move it, but again, I just wanted to point out that we tried to keep the dumpster as far away from other people's residences as possible, and to keep it closer to the apartments. This will be owned and managed by one individual, there's no intention at this point to condominiumize the property, it'll be an investment property for my client, for my client, and he intends to keep it that way. Again, I think, just so you note, we had an existing curb cut on West Street that's being closed off, so again, we're trying to manage all of the traffic right in here, and that's basically, that we can add the notation to the, to the plan, no problem with that. The special permit has been recorded, and I recorded it a couple of weeks ago, so I know we're all set in that regard, and again, I think that this is a significant investment on my client's part, and I think it's a very nice idea for West Street, it's gonna obviously alleviate all the traffic there when the, when the. It's going to obviously alleviate all the traffic there when the funeral home is in operation. It's very narrow there, and as you know, there's parking on both sides of the street. So again, we feel comfortable with the overall plan. If the board feels as though the dumpster should be in a better spot, then it certainly should be moved, because it's not there yet.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board? Yes, babe?
As far as the dumpster being where it is, I think that's the easiest access for it to get serviced, anyway. Safety-wise and all that, so I've got no problem with it being where it is. And it's going to make a nice complex there.
Be all blocked in, right? The dumpster?
Yes, a lot of walls and everything. It's going to be fenced in.
Fenced in.
Right around there. And then, we're going to, this area is actually going to say striped, no, with no parking in there. So there's nobody that can fill in that space there.
It works.
There have been-
Mike, what's your concern with the dumpster location?
Well, as I referenced, Godfrey Brook being a resource area.
Yep.
The brand-new retaining wall that's been put in. Now, we're going to be constructing up against it with a concrete pad, which I don't know if we want people digging in and around that. And then just downgrading that as a catch basin with an outlet directly to Godfrey Brook. That's my concern.
And it's a valid concern. I get, basically, you're not looking for contaminants to get into the garden.
Right, at least if it's somewhere else.
That's what you're basically suggesting. I understand.
Yeah, they'll be visibly seeing any leachate that comes out of there, go across their own property, and they'll be able to see that fairly-
Well, they'll be able to mitigate it in their own self-respect, rather than letting-
Right.
Letting the, and it's a more than valid point. Joe, with that, out of curiosity, because I can't really, my eyes aren't what they used to be. If you go kind of where it starts reading, I think it says existing lawn area, I think, is what it says.
Existing planter and existing fence here, this area?
Come down a little further, Joe. Right, don't, go right around that.
Existing lawn area.
What's the elevation over there? Is it flat? Does it slope up?
It's fairly flat. Again,
It all drains toward the-
It all, yeah, it all comes towards the Brook.
No, I understand that, but I'm not going to ask you to change the grading on the entire site. I mean, I understand.
It's just further away.
But I'm trying to satisfy what Mike's concern is. Obviously, if it's leaching, it's going to run through your parking lot, which you're going to notice is the contention, rather than self-leaching and going in directly into Godfrey Brook. That's Mike's contention. So I guess the question is, putting it over there, I understand the proximity to neighbors is what you were referencing earlier, but-
And I don't think that this is intrusive, but just we picked a spot that was farthest away from everything else.
No, I know, but again, knowing that you're going to fence it, I guess the other thing that you could do, if your concern is for the abutting neighbors, is that you can also plant some avarites around there to better shade it and block the visual. And again, that's not a, that's not really a huge dollar item.
Well, we don't need to find a very big spot. It's a 12-by-14 pad, so I'm-
No, but I also, we also need access, obviously, for the garbage truck to get to it.
So, I mean, we worked on getting this swing as gentle as possible, worked with Larry on this. We cut this-
Yeah, and that's why I chose that area, because I'm assuming the flow of the truck would be able to come in and go close to that area.
We made a spot right in here.
Yeah, that's what my letter suggests, north of Number 27.
Babe, you okay with that?
Closer to parking.
I think in that general location, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, I mean, obviously, you may calculate it goes up a little further. Again, I'm also going to just say that, obviously, in addition to the fence, if you feel compelled to visually block it from abutting neighbors, obviously, avarites would also work well.
So plus or minus where I've drawn this-
I think that would work. I don't, I think that's-
I think it's a better place.
Yeah, I recommend approval, subject to that.
Yeah, I just want to see if there's any other-
Move it through.
Any other? Nobody else? Okay. Pleasure, the board?
I make a motion we approve it with the changes on the-
Subject to the relocation of the dumpster? Motion made by Joe, excuse me, by Babe to approve the amended site plan subject to the relocation. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. I thought you were done.
I was until I just realized Mike made a comment about the catch basin going directly to the Brook. Does that, you know if that catch basin has a hood on it or any type of-
No, it doesn't. I did take a look at it, but it's only just a six-inch little pipe, so I didn't really suggest. Yeah, I didn't, there's actually two catch basins over there with two small six-inch PV, so I didn't bother requesting retrofitting it with a grease trap. You could still put something on the six-inch if you wanted to.
Yeah, you could just put a six-inch tee. I would just put something, just so we can get something on it.
Six-inch tee?
In addition to the relocation of the dumpster pad, in that catch basin, I think it says existing catch basin. I don't know if it gives a location of it, but anyhow, that one also needs to, what do you want, a tee or a hood?
Either one. Whatever they can put for protection, whatever is easier. If they have enough sticking out, they can put a tee on. That might be easier. Otherwise, they can put a hood on the-
They don't make six-inch hoods.
Okay, so you have to put a tee.
A tee. We just went, I just went through it on the job I was on, so we put the tees in. Worked out well.
Six-inch tee on both pipes?
Yes, for oil and gas separation.
All right? Those are existing where they are, so.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I just want on the outlet pipe.
So approval subject to those two. Do I have a second? Second from Lena? Any further discussion here or not? All in favor, opposed, unanimous. Best of luck.
Thank you.
We, out of order, Joe's got Number Nine as well. Then we can get him out of here.
Oh, crap. I didn't notice that one. Joe, you're back on.
We still wanted to-
Joe, you're back on, because-
On the other one?
Yeah, I guess. I didn't notice that one. I wasn't planning on it, because I didn't notice that one, because Larry snuck that one in.
I was going to say you could take Mr. Pettenary's stuff, and I'd wait till the end.
Proposed bond for Industrial Road, Corner Brook LLC.
So, all right, I'll try and give you this as quickly as possible summary of what I've got here. So, I, on behalf of the owner of this property, Corner Brook LLC, I applied for a gravel removal permit. And we did so at the time, because we were not certain yet as to whether all of the material that will be taken from this area, which is the area highlighted in yellow, the darker yellow, that this is the area that is subject to a special permit for gravel removal. And what we really believe is going to go on here is quarrying, which is allowed in the area. However, if there are excess materials that you remove from the site, then you're into gravel removal. So in an effort to err on the side of caution, I recommended to my client that we apply for a special permit. Unfortunately, when I filed the application, I picked the plan up with my documents, and it never got to you. So I went to the zoning board without, excuse me, to the zoning board without your having made a recommendation, and left the zoning board with a special permit that was conditioned upon us, owner and this board, working out the appropriate amount for a bond. And I'm at a loss to make suggestions. As I said to the zoning board when I was there, your bylaw requires that the applicant bring a bond, but who approves the amount, what type of bond, so on and so forth? So from my perspective, I believe that a bond for this parcel of property need be minimal based on the fact that the owner intends to use as much of the processed material on the site as possible. I think this board knows that a portion of this site is subject to another application. So the higher or the spots above where we are are going to be the subject of a 40B application. And so the material that is generated from the crushing and quarrying that will go on here will be used primarily on site. However, to the extent that there's a time when we don't need fill and we have to get it off, then it's going to be leaving the property and therefore falls within the gamut of what we would require a special permit for. The other reason that I don't believe a large bond is necessary is ordinarily, the bond is set aside for the purpose of restoration of the property. So you're assuming, again, because it's earth removal really is what the bylaw was intended to protect, that someone would be coming in and stripping off loam and soils, et cetera, and selling that. That is not what's going to take place here. Quite the opposite. We need all of the loam and material, that type of soil that we need. So anything that's disturbed is going to stay here on the site to be then respread along that area. With that said, I also recognize what the bylaw says, is that you require a bond. So I just wanted to identify for this board the area that will be excavated. And again, you'll see it in the spot. And I am in the process of getting an engineer to give me a calculation on how much, how many yards of material may be moved. And what I would suggest tonight is that the board give authority to the town engineer to set the amount of the bond. I think that Michael's experience in the engineering firm and in this town is sufficient that he can adequately protect the needs of the residents. And I'd like to be able to move forward, again, with being able to deal with Michael and Larry and/or Larry to establish a bond amount and the type of bond that we should put up, whether it be a cash bond or a cash account or tripartite agreement, which this board has used in the past in other circumstances. So I attempted to get today an estimate from the engineer. He was not available. And what I would get would be a, get you a footprint of what will be disturbed and what we think will need to be restored, and then submit a bond for that amount. And so that's the presentation I have tonight. Again, the plan has been properly identified relative to wetland resources. The manner in which the property will be excavated is shown here in this dark brown line. So the access to this area will be made from Industrial Road up into the site. The intention is to do as much work in this area as possible. We have detention basins and areas built in to pick up what we expect to be runoff. If you were to walk this site right now, you'd be walking on a very, very hard surface. It's basically rock now. Again, it's not as though it's covered with loam, but again, those are the kinds of things that ordinarily the bond is there to predict. So we'd be asking, again, for authority to have Michael set the bond amount and then just go forward.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess my only comment is, based on timing and stuff, I would just want to make sure that Michael, you know, I think at least the edge of that, that goes whichever way is the low point of the site, gets some amount of coverage and gets reestablished if it's going to be a long period of time before you're on the site. I mean, I don't, probably the middle of that site doesn't need to be touched, but as it exits the site, we should make sure that it's stabilized.
And again, and no problem with that, Mr. Caligoni, and this is the only area where any crushing activity will take place. Whatever else happens on this site will happen coincidentally with a valid building permit. And the intention here, again, for the long range, is to turn these into pad sites. So the intention is, is that when we're done, and again, this goes to, I think, to the nature of why the bond it needs to be minimal, we're there getting it ready to sell to someone else for a building. So that's the intention.
Yeah, I think we need to do something, just because we don't know what the time is going to be.
I could not represent to you that no stone will leave this property. Once I know that it's processed material as opposed to slabs, then it falls within the bylaw. It was just taking out big chunks, riprap, that we don't need to do that because it's quarrying. But once you start doing other things to it, then you raise it in that level.
I hear a motion from the board?
Make a motion that we have the town engineer set a bond.
Motion by Babe to have the town engineer set the bond. We hear a second. Any other discussion? I think the only thing I'd like to add to that is that Mike comes back to us, so that if we get a change in conditions as they do the work out there, we just get notified if we want to change that. If it comes out that they're taking out all rock, I don't have an issue with it at all. We'll just add to the, the town engineer will consent the bond, and he, at some point in the future, he'll come back to us and just report on the conditions of the site.
Take a vote on that. All those in favor? Opposed?
Unanimous at four.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, we have a ZBA variance for 25 Short Street. The applicant requests lot area, lot width, and lot frontage variations to allow for the subdivision of a subject property to create a second building lot. The proposal would create a 10,541-square-foot lot fronting on Short Street containing the existing house and a 9,462-square-foot lot fronting on Florence Street for future development. The existing 19,913,000-square-foot lot is conforming as to area, contains one single-family dwelling. The dwelling is non-conforming as to setbacks, however, there appears to be no conditions whatsoever relating to land itself or to the surroundings that create a hardship. Therefore, Larry is recommending the board favor and unfavorable to the ZBA due to lack of hardship.
All yours, Mr. Pettenary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ernie Pettenary. I'm here on behalf, tonight I'm here on behalf of Louis Rizzoli and his sister Julie Rizzoli Richards. Mr. and Mrs. Richards are in the back of the room with me this evening. This property, to those of you who have any familiarity with the Plains, is the Rizzoli family homestead. The Rizzolis have made their home in this property for more than 75 years. There are some unique characteristics about the property. The first thing that is unique about the property is that it does, in fact, front on two streets. That's not an accident. That was deliberate. When Mrs. Rizzoli Richards' dad and mom acquired this property, and back up, because her dad acquired it first, but then put it into the joint tenancy when they got married more than 75 years ago. This was comprised of more than one lot. So this is the quintessential former RA zoning lots down the Plains. In those days, it was all 8,000-square-foot lots. And what they had was they had a lot on Florence Street, and they had this lot at the dead end of Short Street. The house was here, and this lot was always kept in this condition from the time they acquired it until now. So there is something a little bit unique about that, and that is that this property, the way it is currently laid out, possesses two lots which are above the average size of all the lots in the immediate area. I started my research going through the list of abutters today, and I was unable, I'm not done, but I was unable so far to find any lot in this general area, which is within the abutter circle imposed by the Board of Assessors, that conforms to existing RB zoning dimensional requirements. So it's not unusual to have lots in this zoning district that are approximately this size or actually smaller. In fact, thus far, I haven't found any lots which are larger than the larger of these two lots would be. So there are a lot of things that are associated with the property, which I think lends itself to a fairly effective argument for the zoning board of appeals. And I respect Larry's position, and I understand that there is a school of thought that says that the kind of hardship that we're talking about is not a hardship that this board would like to recognize. However, because the lot had originally been intended to be the locus of more than one house, and because it can become the locus of more than one house with what we consider to be the minimalist variances, we think that those hardships are legally proven despite whatever the recommendation would be. Again, with respect to that, that's what we believe. The general intention is that the family now is in the process of disposing of this property. Mrs. Rizzoli, as I think you know, passed away recently, and consequently, Lou and Julie are now the owners of this property. Obviously, if this lot can be spun off, it would make it a whole lot better for them in a financial sense. So that's basically our argument we're prepared to make before the zoning board on Thursday evening.
Thank you, Ernie. Questions from the board?
Are they building, are they going to be building on that, a single-family home?
That's the idea.
That's the, a single-family-
Yeah, when you say "they," I don't know if "they" are-
No, but-
It seems to me that they want to position it for sale as two lots. It's ivory. You can't put a duplex.
I was just wondering, no duplex, it's not allowed.
No, 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 no. Single family.
And the house will conform. This street frontage on Florence Street, reinforcing the argument that this was always viewed by Mr. and Mrs. Rizzoli senior as two lots, this is conforming frontage. The only dimensional requirements that this doesn't conform to now is the 15,000 square feet, because at the time they laid the lots out, it was an 8,000 requirement. It would have 9,400 and lot width, because at its narrowest point, it's only 8,000.
I get that. All right.
So that's the argument. I mean, I really do think that this is a development, the development of this lot with a conforming house on it, I believe, is consistent with the zoning down the Plains- And as everybody knows, I grew up down there. I know all those properties pretty well, so.
What's also consistent is it's been in the same family for 75 years, in which they've paid taxes on a lot, probably with the argument in the full intent in the back of their mind that someday they could spin off that lot, whatever.
Well, I think.
I think there's a legitimacy to that. Let me just finish my thought. As of late, and obviously, I don't know what the zoning board does, but as of late, we've seen more and more people coming in, buying property for the sole intent of owning it for a day and then subdividing it. At least I give them a heck of a lot more credit that it's been within the family for 75 years. So I mean, to me, this is, and again, past practice of what the zoning board's been doing as of late, at least this one, I do believe, is more of a hardship than what people have been doing as of late. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
I'm supporting your claim in a very roundabout way.
And I appreciate that. I can only tell you that, that my grandfather did it, my uncles did it, everybody that lived down there had the lot next door. They put a shed on it, and then when the eldest child got married, they built the house before zoning. That was the plan. But remember, they've owned this house since the Second World War.
Yes.
So that's.
I get that.
And again, I applaud them because it's a heck of a lot different than what's been in front of us as of late. And I'm not being critical, I'm being more observant. Anyhow, pleasure of the board.
A move we send a favorable report to the zoning board.
Motion by John for a favorable, seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All in favor? Opposed? Four in favor, one opposed.
Thank you.
Joe. Thank you, and good night. Good luck.
There is only one other lot that conforms like that. That's my opposite.
We have a ZBA special permit for 11 Beach and 18 Pond. Excuse me. The applicant requests ZBA special permit approval to allow for the continued operation of contractors yard on the subject property. Such uses are allowed only by special permit within the Water Resource One Protection District. The site was the location of the former coal gasification plant that operated in the late 1800s to the 1930s. The buildings have been removed and the contaminated soils have gone through remediation. In addition, the applicant received a negative determination of applicability from the Conservation Committee on 9/21/17. Most recently, the site has been used for material storage. Receiving approval of this special permit would bring the current operation into zoning compliance. Therefore, Larry is recommending favorable to the ZBA. Okay. Since there's nobody here, your information is what I provided to you. Is there any questions from the board?
Let's do what he recommended.
I'm just looking at it. I'm sorry, just bear with me one second. John's recommending favorable to the ZBA. Do I have a second on the motion? Seconded by John, excuse me, Joe. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Babe.
Again, make a Water Resource Protection District and we just let everybody do what they want, again, against the regulations. I think it's follow the regulation or do away with the regulation, one of the two.
Valid point.
It is a valid point.
Well, when are they starring down here, though?
I don't know. It doesn't, it doesn't reference.
It said there's a contractor yard, so you can.
It could be anything.
You can set three excavators there with 360 gallons of hydraulic oil and 150 gallons each of diesel fuel.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'd have a tough, tough time saying no to them when we have a highway department bond that's.
But the highway department was there before the Water Protection District.
Certainly, the extensions to the highway department bond weren't.
How long have they had their storage yard there? Or some semblance of a storage yard? It's been some, I'm just curious.
I don't know. The storage yard was just recent. I mean, they had, they had all the electrical connections and the thing there before.
Like a transfer.
That was right next to Beam Tube, so that was.
Yeah, no, 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 I know where, yeah.
So that's what, all the, the wires were still there and all that. When they took down Beam Tube and all that, they cleaned it all, that's when they cleaned it all up. The only thing they stored there before was the buses.
I mean, clearly, if they, there is a concept behind the theory that they've actually remediated the site to become more conforming within the, within the Water Resource District. So there is an argument there that their efforts have actually improved it rather than made it a detriment.
Again, I don't, I don't deny that at all. I'm just saying.
But the contractor's yard is allowed in the WR1 by special permit. It was through, it was through the process of going to Concom that they had been reminded a number of times that, hey, this is, there's still a zoning issue.
That's right. He's entitled to his opinions.
My opinion, yeah.
That's why they're coming back now.
Do they have to come back in terms of a, of a plan for this? I mean, I would, I would say if we put some amount of protection for, you know, drainage entering the, although I'm not sure that. Well, it's just, it's just the closed, whatever drainage system they have going out to the closed drainage system, because the, the Child's River is no longer open through here. So, I mean, all they gotta do is, is, is protect for their, for their drainage, I would think, and that would, that should be adequate. So I have no problem with them, with them being down here. Do they have to come back with anything after, after the special permit?
No.
Or can we, can we put that into the special permit that they have to address the drainage of the site such that?
You could put that in your.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
In your recommendation.
I have no prob, I mean.
It's not clear that they're intending to pave anything, so.
Well, now that Art Reddy is closed.
Who made the motion?
Yes, I did.
You?
Well, I guess I'd ask Babe if he wants to look at any type of protection of drainage from the site.
I mean, I'd like to see a site plan, yeah. What's, what's going to be done? Again.
You're gonna need to rescind your motion.
If you don't pave it, you get all impervious.
John.
Why don't, yeah.
Rescind your second. Joe, rescind your, your motion, then you can obviously start over. So the motion and second's been rescinded.
Well, I mean, I guess the, the only thing is, I, I sent a favorable recommendation to ZBA for site plan approval based on the applicant coming back with a site plan to show the actual work to be completed on the site and to show how they're going to handle drainage on the site.
I like it.
Motion by, motion by Joe to grant the favorable to the ZBA, subject to the applicant returning to the planning board with a site plan.
Then we get our time to.
Showing, I'm sorry. Detailing the work, the work and/or storage and drainage for this specific site. Did I capture that correctly? Ready with that, Karen?
Yeah, so he made the motion now.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five? Good. All right. May I have your letter? We have a, thank you. We have a ZBA special permit for 177 Central Street. The applicant requests special permit approval to add vehicle sales on the subject property. This will be in addition to the existing use of a truck service and repair shop for the repair of truck-mounted hydraulic equipment. Uh, number seven. Oh, I'm sorry, number eight. My apologies. You just did seven. Uh, let's see. Repair shop for the truck-mounted hydraulic equipment, which has received ZBA special improvement on 3/9/17. The applicant now proposes to add the sale and display of hydraulic trucks on the subject property. No building additions are being proposed, and the paved areas will remain unchanged. The paved areas will, however, be restriped to accommodate display areas for the trucks. All other applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met. Therefore, Larry is recommending a favorable be forwarded to the ZBA. An amended site plan will need to be approved for the planning board subsequent, subsequent to ZBA special permit approval. Looks good. All yours, sir.
George Miko Gettner-Halman, and I'm here to present the site on 177 Central Street. The site is located at the intersection of Central and Depot Street, and the applicant is BIK Hydraulics. The applicant is occupying this building. The building has four bays in which he repairs hydraulic vehicles and one bay which he uses for office space. And as part of this project, we are not proposing any new structures, any new buildings, any new pavement.
Let's get to the nuts and bolts in terms of where does he keep the trucks that he's repairing and where in terms is he looking for a display area? And then a correlation to where is the parking for both buildings? Because I also know that there's another building there that requires parking. So again, let's, let's get more into the nuts and bolts of, not too much, because we know he's not doing anything to the building, but in terms of where he's storing the trucks that he's repairing, where he's thinking he wants a display area, and, you know, both customer and employee parking.
His business doesn't require much of storage of hydraulic equipment. Clients pretty much come in and come out because not the personal vehicles. People usually come to driver's phone, drop the vehicle, and they leave, and they come to pick it up, but.
No, but, yeah, we still have to, we have to assume for a second that he's done with the truck on Thursday. Someone in theory may not pick it up till Friday or Monday. So obviously, we have to adhere to the notion that there's got to be an area where he's leaving the truck that has now been completed. So we're just trying to understand where on, you know, where on the site we're talking about a display area and the trucks that are being worked on or have already been completed.
He would like to exhibit six trucks, and he's, he would like to use these three spaces here as exhibition spaces.
There'll be two, two trucks in each area.
Is that a fire lane? He's got two trucks. I can't really tell the way you hashtagged it in this, because it's darkened.
No, they're just.
I wasn't, it's just the side of the bill. Again, I can't really tell.
It's hash marked just to, to show it.
So you got two, two and, okay.
Yeah, so there's six spaces total for display.
Yeah, but that wasn't, that wasn't a, a thruway?
That's what I couldn't tell.
Well, previously, they used it as a drive aisle.
That's what I'm saying.
But it's not required as a drive aisle, so.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm asking. I, I would think that the fire chief would have had a comment that he wouldn't want trucks parked there.
I would have thought it was a fire aisle, but he's telling me it's, it wasn't required. I have a, I have a quick generic question for you, because as I drive by Central Street, and obviously, I do it every day. I also know that the, the occupant of the, the office building, if you will, who happens to be Cinedella, has a lot of his material, because I believe it went through a contractor's yard. There's a lot of his material and machines himself in that general location of where you're wanting to display two units. So I'm questioning if we start to put all these areas for display, what's going to happen to his equipment and what he already has presently stored on the site, how that's going to shift, and then still have allowable or enough employee slash customer parking?
They already cleaned up the site quite a bit. There used to be trailers located here. They are not here anymore. It used to be some kind of a concrete path over here that they're in the process of removing. I didn't find any equipment really stored over there.
You didn't see any of his laws?
I don't think so.
It must have disappeared in the last couple hours, then. Again, I drive by it every day because it's on my way to work, so, like I said, I'm, I'm just trying to be realistic about where his display area. The other question I have is, is the, normally, when you display things facility, you usually try to keep them somewhat in the same general location, although I applaud the efforts of trying to get them visible at, at multiple locations. I just don't know how practical that is.
Well, I would assume if you're coming for a hydraulic truck, you probably have looked at it on the internet or whatever, and I don't think it's drive-bys that are gonna, gonna come by and pick up a hydraulic truck. So I mean, I guess, as long as you have space on the site, I would think they're coming in and you'd go show them wherever they happen to be.
Like I said, most sales yard, they have everything usually located.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice. I don't know that it's a showstopper.
It's not necessarily a showstopper. I'm just, let's be frank, most sales operations have everything contained to a specific area is my point.
My client, actually, his business is not really drive-by business.
Well, nobody in the hydraulic business is going to be a drive-through, drive-by business, especially when you're trying to sell trucks.
No, I understand, but the mother company is actually somewhere in Canada, and they do find them online. They come and purchase a hydraulic truck or don't purchase it. And also, my client travels to shows and presents them there. So it is not really, is not much of a need for them to be highly visible and advertising.
Yeah, okay.
I guess I just, I, I mean, the site needs to, needs to get cleaned up to what, what's shown on here. If there are other things out there, then we would need to make sure that that gets cleaned up. My other concern, though, is if this, if the fire chief hasn't seen this, I, I would have, I, the two that are located next to the building, I would think, would, it would be an issue to me, I would think, because you can't get there. If he doesn't require access, then that's fine. I just don't know that he'd want.
Well, he hasn't seen this yet because it hasn't gotten to a site plan stage. This is a referral to ZBA for the change of use to add the sales. They've got the repair special permit, which is attached to the, to the report.
I don't think it's wide enough for a fire lane anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty narrow, so.
And he's got access all the way around.
He's close enough to the street that.
I mean, for as far as the change of use, I don't have an, I don't have an issue with it. For the allowable use, I should say, for the addition of the allowable use.
Yeah, it would have to come back.
It'd come back any.
Once he gets his special permit.
It's gotta come back.
It'll come back.
Motion, send a favorable to the ZBA?
Motion by Joe for a favorable to the ZBA, seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. And finally. This is a follow-up letter that we sent to the Board of Selectmen based on the roundtable invitation that I attended, which was quite entertaining.
I'm gonna make one, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but I, I happen to be there at that meeting, and I want to, I want it to be noted that it was so cold up in that, upstairs of the Town Hall that I had to leave. And it was, it was not very comfortable sitting there for anyone. So shame on them.
I, I think the spirit of the meeting was well-intended. I think, regrettably, it was not, when you look at what we as a board participated in, we have little, if any, to do with the personnel or the Board of Assessors for that matter or acts of airing grievances about security here at the Town Hall. We are not really full-time town employees, so we don't have the same, I guess, concerns that somebody who works in this building would. And I think they would have been better suited had they broke this down a little differently and had elected boards perhaps with the Building Department and so on and so forth. It probably could have been a little more productive on our end. But with that said, that's why I asked Larry to. But with that said, that's why I asked Larry to write a follow-up in terms of what we put forth to them, because obviously, we'd like to, you know, we'd like to get some...
Feedback.
Feat, well, not only that, but we, we'd like to get their support, we actually'd like to move this forward.
I, I could see the planning board and the zoning board, boards meeting together and working things together, but not, not the way they did it. I just...
Again, I think it was well-intended, I just don't think that it was, for what we, what we represent here in local government, it just wasn't, I don't think we got as much out of it as that perhaps some other departments did. But like I said, this letter is directed to them, these are the efforts that we, that I put forward to them. So obviously, you know, I'd like them to, like I said, have us at a meeting so that we could further discuss it, and obviously, I'd like to get their support behind it, because I think they're worth, you know, they're very noteworthy and, especially the GIS system.
Right.
That's gonna require funding, and it's time that they, you know, that they be supportive of that. Other things are more of what the master plan represents, and in some of these cases, we've put forward town meeting articles that they haven't supported. So if you're truly serious about what you're asking for, then, you know, you need to get behind us and support what we're asking for. So that's basically what this is.
Well, it would be, this is great idea. I like the fact that, that something was written up for us tonight, but I would also like to see what other boards felt about it and what they...
I can only, I can't, I can only correspond what we did as a board, but I, I have no idea.
I'm just being a little curious about how we're all turned out for the selectment. You know, are they gonna issue some kind of a...
I heard, I heard about reverse E911. I heard about cross-collateralizing and people doing different jobs.
Right.
I heard about information systems that don't really pertain to us. I heard everything about, other than, you know, painting walls and stuff. I mean, I heard of a lot of different things, which again, are wonderful, but that really doesn't pertain to us and what we represent as a board, that's all I'm saying. Again, I'm sure they get some positive and information that they needed. Again, having a safe at the town assessor's office, I think that's wonderful. I don't know why you don't have one. Again, having panic buttons, I don't know anything about it, I always feel safe in this building. But again, I don't work here every day, so I, there's things I just don't know. So in terms of getting feedback, I don't really think that some of the feedback we are required to have.
Right.
So, but like I said, with that, I just wanted to put it back on them that we, we actually want to really...
Did you send it, yeah?
I did send it, yes. I haven't heard back.
You did an excellent job.
I haven't heard back, but I did send it.
You did a very good job presenting for the, for the planning board. I just want to, and it was very cold.
I don't disagree, Lena.
It's broken.
Thank you, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I have one other thing that...
Oh, sorry, hadn't jumped the gun.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering, I know the Wendy's parking lot and stuff...
Yeah, I've asked Mike about that several times.
And I'd like to see if the building department, the town engineer could do something, because it's getting to the point where that drive on Dilley Street disclaims many...
Well, we're looking at two different things. We're looking at potentially doing a median on Route 85, and we're looking at, in fact, I've already got a letter drafted to Wendy's corporate, reminding them that, hey, you had a site plan approved, if you actually followed it, you wouldn't have this problem. Driveway is on private property, if it's flooding, they should fix it. Part of the reason it's flooding is because their drainage system, that's part of the approved site plan, hasn't been maintained on the one hand or necessarily installed correctly on the other. All of those things are fixable, they should do it instead of sitting there and causing all these problems for everybody else. Because when, when it floods, the police department block off the street or that access, which forces even more traffic back out on the highway, and people are making early turns. So we can prevent that from happening. And the highway surveillance is already looking into it. It's 275 feet of median down the so-called central line on, on the highway to prevent left turns either way.
Yeah, that, that does that, that doesn't, that doesn't address the flooding.
Flooding can be fixed.
Does not address the flooding.
So I was going to use the planning board as the shield and threaten them that, you know, if you really want to have somebody yell at you, I'll have you on the agenda, and you can explain to the planning board why you can't manage after all these years to maintain your site.
It's becoming...
Yeah, well, I think that needs a change.
It's a drug.
I mean, it's, it's now no longer days, it's weeks sometime that that's closed.
That's the building department.
Yeah, I know it is. I mean, it's ours to indicate that the site plan isn't, isn't being upheld to, to the extent that we can send it. I mean, at the end of the day, it's a building vomit, but seeing how nothing's happened, I'm just, I'm just getting...
I've had multiple calls into Mike, every time I drive by, they're, it's closed. It's, again...
Well, because safety is on the main. But that's where the, that's where the building department, that's where they're gonna get off their butt, and they're gonna do their job.
Yes.
But in terms of, in terms of having an approved site plan, and all you guys, you know, are aware of how all that stuff works, we're probably gonna be more successful in getting their attention.
Again, well, we're the approval, we're the approvals department.
Yeah, they're the enforcement.
But I think we need to do something regardless, it's a town issue to me now, because if something happens and somebody gets into an accident and they're going the wrong way on 85, I think it's us forcing them when you, when you close off the other driveway, they have no choice.
But 275 feet of either Jersey barriers or actual...
Yeah, well, that'll close that off, but I mean, I think we, we as a town, regardless of whether it's us building department, need to address the drainage issue.
It's not that bad.
And if no one else is going to, then I think this board needs to.
Yeah, and that's why I think you'd, I could...
Tuesday, because we're getting ready to...
Make an additional contact.
Mm-hmm.
Please show you, get their attention.
Yeah. We get it every three years, we, we know that city pretty well. Yeah, Tara and I go. Any, any further, Joe?
No, that was it.
All right, so I'll take a motion from Lena to...
Adjourn.
Adjourn, seconded by Babe. Thank you and have a good night.